Good evening. Welcome to Board of Agendas, the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, August 10th, 2015. Chief, would you like to lead us in the Board of the
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in his global liberty and justice overall.
I need a motion for the approval of the minutes of Monday, July 27th, regular session.
One moment of silence.
Excuse me.
Thank you.
I need a motion for the approval of the minutes of Monday, July 27th, 2015, regular session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Do we have any public comment? Hearing none. It's not 6:40 yet, but I'm sure Wayne and Mary, do you want to give your update on the community park events?
Sure. Good evening. What I wanted to report tonight is about the Recreation Department and some of our successes this year. Overall, we've had an increase in participation over last year of 10 percent, particularly in our adult segment, our adult market with resurgence of golf, which we've brought back and is getting much stronger. We've added pickleball and we've added some adult fitness classes. I also can tell you that there's been a 28 percent increase in actually non-resident use of Mashpee Recreation. So that's an interesting statistic as well. Couple of programs that I'm not sure you're aware of that I'd like to highlight, one of our very successful for the first time programs this year was our Junior Police Academy. In the past, we've run a Junior Firefighters Academy, but this year, we saw 12 young people between the ages of six and 12 years old participate in a two-week-long instructional process. And I want to thank Heidi McLaughlin, who's our program supervisor, along with School Officer Will Kuzo, who put this together. And they worked very carefully and closely, and some of the folks at our police department who acted as instructors for this program. And I think just the small bit is it was a wonderful success and a great learning opportunity, but I think the bigger advantage for our community is having our young people having a relationship with our police department and really forging a positive interaction with those folks. The other program, another program I'd like to highlight is our UKSD, which is our soccer developmental program. We run instructional clinics throughout the year that folks do pay for and register for, but with this particular vendor, who I'm thrilled to support and have as someone in our community, runs a kids-for-free soccer clinic. So I was there the day they ran the clinic and we had three-year-olds, eight-year-olds, 12-year-olds, 50 kids out on the field with soccer balls, and it was all for free. And that's part and parcel to who he is and who the organization is. And the folks that were helping instruct were volunteers, middle-school and high-school-aged children, students. And the pay for them being volunteers throughout the summer for all of these free clinics is they get to go on a world tour and pick various countries, lower socioeconomic areas, and they bring free soccer. So they're bringing kids from our area to other nations and other parts of the world, really with this focus and this enrichment and education for the folks that are volunteering and offering these free clinics. It's just, it's an amazing vendor and I'm very happy that Mashpee is utilizing them. Another new program this year that I'd like to highlight also is our freshwater fishing instruction. We teamed up with Department of Fisheries and Wildlife in the state of Massachusetts and they were able to offer free fishing for our kids up at Johns Pond, which again, it's a nice collaboration in using our resources and making it accessible to everyone. So I'd like to highlight those couple of programs that were availed of our community this year that I was just mentioning. Onto the community park. As you know, we've had a great success at our community park. Tomorrow night is the sixth of six concerts. The funding for those, and I'm not sure you're aware of that, was all grant-funded. That actually was given at the Cultural Council and the Arts Foundation, both of which I wrote grants through to get these six concerts. And I wanted to start small and see what we could do. As of tomorrow night, we will have had over 800 participants throughout the summer. And again, the access is free and people are enjoying the park. It's been a great success and next year, if we can expand it, you know, if we can do a little more grant funding to get more opportunities over there. Food Truck Fridays has been a lot of fun. That goes through the end of August. Right now, we've had anywhere from four to six vendors each week, couple of them sold out each week, which is wonderful. And again, try to expand on that next year. I've already had folks ask if we won't go through into September. I'm glad to do it. It's working out beautifully, so I'm happy with that. Some of the upcoming events that we have planned, in fact, somebody asked me, well, you know, is that going to be seasonal or are you going to be done kind of in the fall? I said, not if I can think of something to do every month throughout the year. Family movie night, our first one, our first stat at that will be on Saturday, August 22nd. The movie starts at dusk because we have to have not too much ambient lights so the screen will show, but again, it's free to everyone. We're inviting families, bring your kids, blankets, little snack to eat and enjoy a family-friendly movie. If that goes well, we'll do a little research, but we're also looking in October potentially doing New England Patriot Football Day. And again, open to everybody, just get the community engaged and do different creative things with that space. Oktoberfest this year is on Saturday, October 3rd. It will still be at the Mashpee Commons Green, which is near the library. Still going to hold it there. We did move it up a week because we felt that there was a lot of competition with other local fairs and Yarmouth has something going on and Wareham, and so maybe we could get, drive a little bit more participation by moving it up a week. The second annual Fill the Van, last year, we filled over 27 shopping carts of food. We filled the recreation van full of donations, again, throughout our community and everybody helping out, so looking forward to doing that again. And then lastly, our hope is that on Saturday, December 5th, we're inviting Santa to come on a fire truck and light the tree across the way and have carolers and hot chocolate and again, just have a wonderful family community day and utilizing our space across the way.
Sounds good, Mary.
Wayne, do you have anything you want to add?
Well, I don't have much to add.
Could I have your name and address, please?
But John, we've, we've, we've been very fortunate. We've gone over to the park. I've been to each one of the concerts. It's, it's a great, great night for the community. And the best part of it is you see the kids intermingling with other kids out there. It's just a great, great night. Food Truck Friday, I could probably do without the fat, but it's, it's really good. And I know you went over, John, with me at one time and we had a good night. But I like what the Recreation Department's doing and I just wanted to make sure that you folks were aware of it, that there are these things going on in the community. And sometimes we're sitting up there as selectmen and we don't know that these events are going on, and the public, by having this forum, will get to know as well. So thank you for listening and I hope to see you all over at the, at the, what is it called?
Train the Dragon.
How to Train the Dragon.
How to Train the Dragon movie on the 22nd. So thank you very much, guys. I appreciate it.
The Board have any questions? It's for Mary while she's here. Thank you very much.
You're doing a great job.
Thank you. Does anyone have any communications or correspondence they want to bring up?
I have a couple, actually. Actually, library trustees are meeting again tomorrow, but last month, we had a great meeting.
That's your liaison report.
Correct.
Okay, this is communication.
Oh, I'm sorry. My bad.
Makes no difference to me.
You actually do have time. Do you want to do that?
Go ahead and finish it off.
All right. So, so the library trustees, again, I think one thing that they're looking to do is at the library utilize, they have a lot of iPads, so they're going to work on getting the iPads utilized and upgrade their Wi-Fi in the library to a more suitable standard, if you will. It was a little bit weak as far as to use, utilize all the iPads. In addition to that, the Historical Commission, we had a great meeting at the Archives, myself and Mr. Town Manager. And I think we found it to be, I was enlightened. I think we're both history buffs, if you will, and I think they, they have a lot of work to do, but I think right now, they're looking at, I don't know what the final results were, the, the humidity or the moisture in the building, but hopefully that was been resolved and they can start to move things back in. And I don't know if you can add a little bit to that?
Yeah, the Archives is, is going to be providing some information regarding the temperature downstairs. And then in terms of upstairs, they have some preference as far as the setup and the organization of furnishings. And as far as I'm concerned, they can set it up how they want to and I'll just give it the blessing.
I, for one, believe in giving committees their own in almost anything. That's what they're for.
We're on the same page.
Their office.
Yep.
That's how I look at it. I understand it's a town building like other town buildings, but it's, it's their identity and for all practical purposes, it's their building to utilize for their purposes. And I just want to make
Until something goes wrong, then you'll find out how fast it's your building again.
That'll be my building, but I just want to make sure that they're supported in their cause and I know that most of their efforts are volunteers, so I do appreciate what they do. And we're in the process of providing a cropping machine. And then secondly, we're also going to be providing some shelving. So that's what's on the agenda. No heavy lifting, sort of, and we'll get it taken care of so that this project can be finally put to rest.
Very good.
And the humidity problem in the basement, is that something that's
Oh, we still have to wait for the report. I think that's like a week to two weeks away.
But it's being worked on.
But yes.
Tom, have you got anything on our expanded communications correspondence liaison reports?
Expanded, very, very time here. Well, I could always jump to the solid waste committee and it's
You don't have to give a little report on that.
Right, well.
Of the survey.
Solid Waste Committee, we put out the survey. It's available on the town website. So if you go to the town of Mashpee, you'll come to the front page and right in the beginning on the front page, it says solid waste survey. Very simple. I think there are a total of six questions. It takes all about two minutes, it's just clicking. There is a space for a comment if you choose to use that, but we're looking as the solid waste committee to use the information to give us a better understanding of how the residents in the town use the transfer station.
Good.
Carol?
I'm good this week.
Nope.
Okay. All right. Tonight, we have the, what are you pointing at?
Under Communications, impact.
No, that's, no, that's
Review and discussion of mass host community agreement with the mass marijuana.
Tonight's the night to ask all your questions that I've been hearing, and I'll give the public a chance after they're done, if they want, want to ask anything specific.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Mark Gilde. I represent medical marijuana of Massachusetts. With me tonight are Jonathan Hurley, who is the president of MM&amp;M, Leanne Anker, who is the, Anker, excuse me, is the general counsel and the security compliance officer for the entity, Joseph Flaherty, who is the director of security, Jim Caro is a local consultant, Mary Leclair is the director of community outreach for the entity, and Mr. Rosati Rivera is from Holmes and McGrath, who is a consulting engineer on this project. Before you is a copy of the plan. I don't know if you'd like me to briefly go through it or why don't you familiarize yourself with it before?
Well, I'm kind of at it. An advantage, so was Andy, we had a, had most of our questions answered in our previous meeting, so I'll ask my three board members that haven't really seen the plan yet, would you like them to go through the plan or are you familiar with it?
I reviewed it actually, today actually, but I did have a couple of questions. I'm assuming this has already been
About the plan or?
Well, about the whole, the agreement itself.
Right to the end, we'll get to all the questions.
Okay.
Do you want to just briefly summarize, if you can just point out some of the highlights? I see the building, the parking. I know there was some question about the outside dumpster, things like that. Just touch on that.
The, the focus of the plan has been, and of the whole project, is security and safety. Safety for patients, safety for employees, and safety for the community. As you can see from the plan, the project is surrounded by a fence of the entire project road. Can you mind pointing out some of these things? The fence goes around the entire project. There's a fence that segregates the parking area for the patients from the parking area for the employees and the area where deliveries will be made. There's limited landscaping on the project because your regulations and the state regulations want to make sure that individuals cannot be concealed on the property, so there's a distance of 50 feet between any type of vegetation where someone could hide. There's a security gate at the entrance to the property and that security gate will allow one of the security personnel, there's two on-site when the facility is open, it will allow that one individual to make sure that no one gains access to the property. That does not have a card entitled to purchase a product or is not an employee or someone making a delivery. As I said, there'll be two security personnel on-site at all times when the facility is open. Again, another purpose of the project to promote security is the fact that there will be no products stored on the property. The product will actually be brought in each day from the grow facility in Plymouth and will be taken off the property each day. In addition, there'll be no money left on the property. So those, that's generally the outline.
Now, as the fences, I see the, what type of the fence is put around the perimeter?
Chain link.
Chain, chain link, no barbed wire or anything on the top of it?
No, we're trying not to make it
Okay, just, right. I thought what I'm, what I think you like on that one, for sure.
And the property is going to be under surveillance. There'll be surveillance video cameras, there are state regulations relative to that. Personnel that will be hired are not going to be just inexperienced security personnel, but rather it'll be people that are trained. The director of security, Mr. Flaherty, has a lot of experience with this field. We've met with the police department as well as the fire department. Both those departments seem to support the project and seem to be satisfied with the extent of security that we've implemented on this project.
Hours of operation?
Hours of operation are going to be limited to start. It's going to be dependent upon the desire and the need of the customer. Initially, it will all be by appointment. Initially, we don't expect to have more than 15 patients a day and the hours will be extremely limited, so everything by
None at night?
No, it's not expected to be at night. Any other questions? So the reason we're here and that's on the agenda is the host community agreement, which is before you. And we have submitted a copy of the proposed host community agreement to your town manager and we've negotiated the matter. I believe the town council has taken a look at it. This host community agreement will provide a number of benefits to the community. First would be real estate taxes. My client is agreeing in the host community agreement in section three, not to apply for any exemptions, it's voluntary pay, whatever real estate taxes would be due. With respect to donations, there's a section in the host community agreement that will provide, my client would make a donation to the town in the year 2016 in the amount of $20,000. There'll be a donation in the year 2017 in the amount of $20,000. And in the year 2018, there'll be a donation of $100,000. thereafter, that $100,000 amount would increase annually by 3 percent. Finally, there is a charitable foundation that's established under the host community agreement. My client originally was approved for licenses in Plymouth, for Taunton, and Mashpee. The proposed charitable foundation would establish a board of directors that would include three members from the towns, basically the chief executive officers of the town, the town manager in Mashpee, the town manager in Plymouth. Originally, we were licensed for Taunton, but that issue is still outstanding, so there'll be a third community. Whatever community that is, the chief executive officer of that community would serve on the board of directors. In addition, the director of community outreach for my client in each of those communities would be on the board of directors. And finally, there'd be a seventh individual to be appointed by my client to serve on that charitable foundation. And the charitable foundation is being created and funded to support research pertaining to the medical efficacy of medical marijuana, as well as to establish local community initiatives for Plymouth, Mashpee, and that third community. The foundation's board of directors would have the full power and authority to determine how to allocate all of the funds that are paid into the foundation. That's a general outline of the agreement. We're asking for your support for the agreement and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
If I could just add, it has been reviewed by legal counsel. It's true to form, subject to any amendments, revisions that you may desire in regards to any terms and conditions prior to authorizing me to execute.
And your foundation?
Nothing in here saying that any money's going to go to the foundation. How's that determination made?
It'll be based upon the sales and the money generated by the operation. It's a not-for-profit. Under law, it has to be a not-for-profit, so money would be determined at the end of each year.
After salaries and the like?
Yes.
But there's no, just because it's not-for-profit doesn't mean that salary, there's any limitations on the salaries such that it could have nothing left over?
That's a sensitive issue in the Commonwealth in recent years and the Attorney General's Office is involved in overseeing the operation of nonprofits as well as the salaries that they pay.
Understood, but there's some pretty hefty nonprofit salaries. I guess what I'm, putting this out as a community benefit and there's no assurance in the agreement that it's ever going to get funded a nickel?
That's correct, but there's no assurance that this operation is going to make money and be able to pay money to the foundation. It's going to be dependent upon the sales and its operation, but it's going to be limited because they can only pay so much to their offices and directors, offices, excuse me, and boards.
Are directors paid?
No, I don't believe so. The one, one of the directors that we have to appoint and one will, the rest will not be.
If I do the math right, the company controls the foundation. Seven votes?
Yes.
Four appointees by you.
Yes.
Is there any public, is there going to be any reporting to the community of what the salary, you know, how you, how you achieve your determination about whether you have money left over or not?
Well, it's a not-for-profit corporation, so that information would be available.
But no
We have to report that to the Commonwealth. We have to report that information to the Commonwealth. It'd be a public record.
So should we file a records request with the Attorney General's Office to get that or would that be something that would, as a matter of course, be provided to the town?
We don't have to file a public records request.
They can get it online.
Well, we'll give it to you as well.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm getting towards.
We've checked a few town managers doing their job, which I'm sure they will be. They're going to be right on top of it because they're going to be a member of the board of directors.
Can you explain the rationale and the ramp up on the payments to the community and how you got to those numbers?
If you don't want us to go up, we won't, but
That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about the fact you start low, stay low, and then, and then bump up.
We stay low for two years just because we're not going to be fully operational. And we're planning, hopefully by the third year, there'll be sufficient resources in the operation to allow us to make
By the third year, you're going to have legal marijuana and we're going to renegotiate the whole deal anyway.
You mean recreational.
Yes.
But right now, we have to plan with what we have.
There is a re-opener here though, isn't there?
Clearly, there's a re-opener in the event that, as you say, we'll have recreational marijuana being legal at that time, then we have to come back to the town. And clearly, your town planner did a good job in drafting the bylaw that was passed that allows this as a special permit that town meeting adopted because it's limited to medical marijuana. It does not address or allow for the sale of recreational marijuana at that time.
I guess my concern, I shared this with you in private, so it's no surprise to do it in public, is that, I guess in my estimation, is it going to be a valid question, it's likely to pass. And a lot of the attractiveness of the presentation and the measures you've taken to control access, limit traffic, and have the relatively low-impact service provided within the community, kind of go out the window when there's general recreational sale. And so that you will be approved under this scenario and the law, basic laws will change and a lot of the things that have been provided to the community to give it comfort with the existence of this facility in the community will no longer be applicable because anyone over 18 will be able to go in and purchase. And so I'm concerned, I have a concern about, even though I'm speculating and you can't be expected to, you know, adjust your program to a speculative change in the law, I feel pretty confident that's likely what's going to be. So I have a degree of discomfort that I'm not sure you can allay. It's just, it is what it is. And I just think we're going to be looking at a radically different operation two, two and a half, three years down the road than we're signing on to now. You know, and to that end, you know, I'd be interested in seeing, you know, some modification and ramp up that payment to the community more quickly so that we have some resources to anticipate and prepare for what the future impacts might be, whether we choose to use those funds to expand school education programs, to, you know, counsel people on substance abuse, whether it's for adult substance abuse, you know, programs or support or those types of things. So I, you know, I understand the first year, you're not going to be fully up and running. You're going to open sometime in early 16, according to the conversation we had. I can see keeping the payment during that period, you know, lower. Frankly, my expectation would be that by, by 16, we could be, you know, on our, or 17, we should be on our way to increasing that to get to that number of 100 that you proposed in 18. So I'd like to suggest that you, you know, go back and think a little bit more about what you can offer the community in 17. I mean, this is, clearly, this is a money-making enterprise. You, you and others would not have fought so hard to get these licenses. So I can see a ramp up in the first year to get operational, work out the bugs, figure out how you're going to operate, but I would think that you'd be, you know, more closely fully operational by 2017 and not have, not ask the community to wait for the full benefit for that until 2018.
Mr. Chairman, may I respond briefly?
You most certainly may.
With respect to your concerns about the protections we've, having put in there not lasting, I respectfully disagree because if the law changes, as you speculate, we have to come back to the zoning board of appeals again and deal with some new type of special permit presumably that town meeting will have passed. Secondly, the agreement as drafted says that we will return for, it's a re-opener, so we will come back to you in the event the sale of marijuana becomes legalized in the Commonwealth.
Understood. And I appreciate the fact you added that after a conversation you had with the chair and myself.
As far as your other point about ramping it up in the second year, if I could just have a brief moment to consult with my client, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, you, you most
We need a recess. I just want to walk over to
You're most, you're not going to get a vote from us tonight anyways. You'll get it next meeting, but if you'd rather get back to us on it, that's fine. Or you can do it now. I don't care.
No, I'll get back to you. In the meantime, I will communicate with the town manager.
Okay. Is that all right with you, Andy?
Certainly. Thank you.
Any questions?
Just, just want to clarify, so you did say, so there's no product left on the premises at night?
That's correct. And that's, that one point, you mentioned the dumpster. That's why we don't have a dumpster. That's why we don't have a dumpster, because we don't want some foolish young individual thinking that there's something...
Where is the product going to go at night?
It goes back to the dispensary, the grow facility in Plymouth.
Can I interrupt one second here? This is, at this point, you're not saying there'll never be any there, because that came up before.
Well, we're saying at this point, but if we were going to change our operation, we would come back and talk to the town manager and present it to the town.
Even to the extent of if you're going to keep marijuana there?
Yes.
Oh, all right. I misunderstood that. I was, I'm the impression at our meeting is that because you're only doing it by appointment and it'd be small amounts, that you wouldn't be keeping it there, but eventually it would become, okay, my fault. That's even better.
So that's in the agreement in somewhere, that you're not leaving any of this on the premises?
It's not in the host community agreement, but I anticipate we will present that to the zoning board of appeals, and they may make it a condition. If they don't, I'm happy to speak with the town manager and find somebody to include it.
Okay.
Do you want to make a note of that?
Yes.
And it does, if it does become, just to clarify, I know we just talked about it, but, so if it does become recreational, this, there's a new special permit that's required, so it's, you just can't continue operational as a dispensary for recreational marijuana, correct?
Well, we are anticipating that if it does become recreational, that your town will seek to address that issue, much as you did when they passed the law allowing for medical marijuana. So there will be some type, we anticipate some additional zoning bylaw that will address our issue. In addition, I can't imagine that the Commonwealth is simply going to allow medical marijuana, excuse me, marijuana to be sold for recreational purposes without some regulation. So we fully anticipate we're going to have to comply with the state regulations as well.
John, the big thing for us, too, is it reopens negotiations as far as what their, our, what they call donation to the town would be.
That's why we did this, let's face it. I mean, we jumped on board just for that reason as well. And the agreement that's before you is the same agreement that the town manager's proposed?
Are they signed and sealed, delivered now?
No, I haven't signed yet.
And that's on the grow facility?
That's, there's a grow facility.
Is also a dispensary there, isn't there? Yes. John, Ed, are you have?
Same three, same three questions.
No, I'm good. I think they covered everything I needed to hear.
Now, on your board of directors that you have, it's changed from what we had before, the names that we, when they first filed.
Are you saying on M and N, or the one that's proposed for the charitable foundation?
Yes.
No, the one for M.
The people are all the same, excepting that one individual is no longer involved in it. The medical director, Tretch Topping, who unfortunately is on vacation and couldn't be here today, was involved. He's still involved, and these individuals were all previously involved.
Okay.
Did you mean the original?
To answer your question, yes.
The original, Mr. Delahunt?
Yes.
And Ms. Tomasi's called.
And Tomasi's, Tomasi's.
So they're different.
Right, right. They are different.
Just so you, the board is aware, which was one of the important things to me, is the security, they still have the same consultants, still have the same people, and that's where I was very impressed before. I wasn't really for having marijuana at all. There's two things that changed me, the security arrangements that were being made, and Mr. Tomasi being there, who's no longer there, which kind of has me a little nervous. But other than that, this group showed everything you needed to show.
Dr. Topping, who is involved, formerly was with the National Institute for Health, he will be in charge of education, and he's a well-qualified individual. I think you'll find that he will satisfy any issues that may arise.
And I did mention at one of the previous meetings, but I'll say it again, in terms of safety, security, the objective from day one has been to prevent diversion. I think that's addressed. Secondly, I just want to assure the board that, based on all of the information that I've received up to date, we're not talking about security being performed by 10 or $11 an hour security guards. It's going to be much more professional, much more nuanced than that. And then, lastly, all of the folks that have been involved in the process have been nothing but professional in providing a lot of counsel and advice as to how they're going to be doing it, and from the monitoring to the fencing, to you name it, to the checkpoint, it's all been top shelf up until now.
One other thing I just, you know, as far as it not being kept on site, I mean, so it sounds like that's still part, for me, it's a little troubling, if you will. If that's the case now, is there possible for us to have something drawn up in the agreement to say, if that was to change, we would at least be notified?
We already...
So that's very, so that would be official?
He made me make a note of it earlier. I've got it.
So have you changed in the agreement?
I'll tell you what, is being a kind of a critic, again, this group has shown me nothing but top shelf, everything they've done, and their people are just the tops in their field.
I have to be very satisfied with the security assessment.
Yeah, no, it's...
Any other questions? As I told you, we're not scheduled to take a vote tonight. We'll take a vote next meeting, just to ratify it. In the meantime, with the few things we do have, you can get together with the town manager and correct them.
Thank you.
All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We have ladies, I understand you're here to discuss a proposal from the Freedom Rose Cape Cod. Would you like to come up and tell us what you have in mind? Room is whatnot, at least I have. I don't know exactly what it's all about.
My name is Jen Richard, and in October of 2014, I was approached by Community Rowing in Brighton about adding a military program, an adaptive para rowing program to Cape Cod, in particular to meet the needs of the Joint Base Cape Cod and their personnel, plus retired veterans that are on the Cape. I spent two months going to the existing rowing clubs on Cape Cod. I'm on the board of Cape Cod Rowing, Orleans Sweeps and Skulls. I'm one of the chairpeople for head of the Charles Regatta, co-chair of emergency services for them, and on the Greater Boston Federal Executive Board's Emergency Preparedness Council or Continuity Working Group. So being connected in that way, I really wanted to approach the local rowing clubs to see if they would add in a military or adaptive para program. Unfortunately, on the Cape being as seasonal as it is, there's very little resources for adding anything to what their existing program is. And these are all, there's membership fees involved in that. So they were short, they were short on equipment as it was, and after two months, I really believed that we needed to add a military program to the Cape, and I took it on myself to start a program myself. And so thus began what eventually became named Freedom Rose Cape Cod. I grew up the daughter of a military, a Navy officer. I have moved, my upcoming move to Wintermonte will be my 45th. I went to 17 schools growing up, between kindergarten and 12th grade. I went to eight colleges. For me, I lived the military life. I am not an active military person, but I know what it's like to be on a base and be away from your family and not feel like you belong. And in addition to the adaptive para aspect of this Freedom Rose program, the Freedom Rose program will serve active, retired, discharged military service members who have ever served at any time in the military and their families free of charge. All children can participate, starting at the age of 12, because what I would like to do is bond families together in a positive recreational program that meets the White House initiative, which is joining forces. If you go to the White House webpage, and I did include that in my proposal, that this specifically targets the military families and their children, because a lot of them are being displaced because of the deployments. And that's speaking for the active military. However, we have a higher reason on the Cape. Many of which have served in the war. We know PTSD is a very significant issue here on the Cape amongst our veterans. And I, at the VA outpatient clinic in Hyannis, I have Dr. Monty Van Beaver, who is completely on board with recommending the rowing program to his patients. And that would include both physical, for physical and psychological benefits of rowing. There is no charge to anybody for this program.
How do you, how do you, excuse me, how do you fund this?
I wrote a grant in June, and I am pleased to announce tonight, on my way here, I spoke with one of the heads of US Rowing. I was granted the VA funding for this year.
How much?
Yet to be determined.
This sounds like it's a very expensive proposition, that's what I asked.
It's an expensive proposition, but I will explain how it'll happen. First of all, they will be funding, it was a, it's a significant grant. It's the year two of this grant that was created to meet the joining forces initiative. US Rowing is the, let's call it a parent organization for rowing in the United States. All US rowing clubs must register officially under US Rowing, and they have a section of their program for the military and adaptive para rowing community. That's who I fall under, because Freedom Rose is a program that US Rowing started a year, possibly two years ago, to start up clubs that address the military and adaptive para rowers within the military community. I took it upon myself to broaden that scope and invite people who are adaptive para rowers that have no military association as well, because they need a place to row. So they do not, they're the ones that don't have to have the military affiliation, but they will be welcomed.
Do you have a nonprofit?
We're in the process of that, because we're waiting for funding. I've paid out of pocket, and I bought a double, a rowing sculling double, and a recreational single, which Jen here, who is from the military base, Jen LaCass, she has rode in that, and it's old and looks pretty bad, but it works really great. And we rode around Pappanessett Island, I kayaked, kind of providing coaching, and Jen rode. And Deb has done that. Deb Daimy is actually going to be co-leading the program with me. Dawn is a veteran and believes in the program and the benefits it will bring to the community. And within that, going back to the resources, once again, the grant, as I understand it, is several hundred thousand dollars. They will be starting up anywhere from four to six rowing clubs in the US during FY 2016. I will be one of them. That's what I found out tonight, so we did get our funding. Waited so long for that. I will have a group of people that will, that will consult with. It will not just be Deb and I determining how we expend those funds. I don't know if it'll be 10,000, if it's 15 or 20. That's yet to be determined. I'll, I use good votes to maximize the dollars, because every penny counts. We have to buy insurance. We have to just provide, actually, you don't have to, it's free. Our coaching is free, so, you know, we volunteer our time. And from the clubs on the Cape, I've had people willing to volunteer their, their time to provide coaching or consulting. For example, this evening, I spoke to Amy Dion, who is a physical therapist at Spalding Rehab. She handles Wednesday night sweep rowing, and I handle Tuesday night sculling rowing for all of our learn-to rows and intermediates at Lake Rock Quocket with Cape Cod Rowing. She is willing to become a consultant to assess the adaptive and para rowers that we get, to help see what their muscle tone issues are and what we'll need to help get them in about. There's very few restrictions that we're going to have. Almost everybody, we can find some sort of an accommodation, a high-back seat that they can be strapped to.
Not to interrupt you, but I've read a lot of it, and I think it's a great idea. I think we'd rather get to it right now, is what do you need the town for?
John's pond.
Well, John's pond's there. You could go swimming right now if you like.
But because it's a nonprofit, and we would be storing votes there, I didn't want to circumvent the system. I would, I have proposed to get permission to...
I read all the emails. We got, we got a pretty good file of everything. There's a lot of things in here that we can't go around, such as you've already seen. You, and we most certainly can assist you with the getting the different permits and whatnot. But is it, is it the use of the pond you want? Do you want a section of the pond?
I need to have sand space where I can construct boat racks for the boats that we are being loaned or that we'll purchase. So we just need beach space. Eventually, as we get adaptive para rowers, we'll need rowing docks that will be removable at the end of the season. I spoke with Mary from the Recreation Department just two days ago about, actually, it was...
I wish she was still here, because this would be here a whole bell week.
Yes. She actually brought up what about docks for the adaptive para rowers, and she said that she has resources. We can communicate with her and find those resources as we need them for installing removable docks.
So I think what you're looking from us right now is us to grant an imprimatur, or whatever you want to say, and we think it's a great idea. I know I do.
If I could, just for a second.
Sure.
According to town council, anytime we allow private groups to occupy town-owned property for recreational, social, or other purposes, we do require at a minimum execution of either a license agreement and/or a release slash waiver of liability form. He indicates further, whereas here alterations are contemplated to town-owned property, construction activities involved, and personal property and equipment is to be stored on town property, he does believe that the program operator should provide an insurance policy affording coverage to the town.
That was all in the emails.
As a named additional insured in the event of personal injuries or death to the program participants. This is not an unusual requirement, and most, if not all municipalities that he works with would impose such an insurance requirement.
From the emails I see, you've been told most of this already.
I was told that I had, that I had to secure an insurance plan that would name the town of Mashpee as a beneficiary. I can't do that. What I can do is sign a wa, have our people sign a waiver that would not hold the town of Mashpee responsible for...
Not looking for an addition, for, to be a beneficiary, need to be determined to be an additionally insured, which is different.
Hold harmless.
So...
Oh, hold harmless?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's the issue. Not, we don't need to be beneficiary.
Right.
It's just if something happens to somebody, they look...
It was more of a beneficiary in some of the emails.
They look to the deep pocket, and if the town isn't covered under your insurance policy, then they're going to go after, you know, they pursue that, because the resources the town would have available would exceed whatever your insurance carrier would cover. So that's the only issue. If it's a, if it's just a misunderstanding about the nature of the insurance coverage, if listing the town as an additionally insured is not a problem, then I haven't heard one word of concern about, about this program.
No, it was my understanding that it's a, it's a waiver that our participants would sign, that we would create...
No, it's not a waiver. It's, it's in addition to your insurance policy.
As an organization, you have to, you'll have to hold your own, you have to buy your own insurance policy. And this way, anyone that's, enjoys the rowing club, if you will, they, you have your own insurance with that.
There's two things the council's asking for. That we execute, that we execute an agreement with you for use of the town property that is either a license agreement or a waiver of liability, and then separately, that your insurance policy that you need to cover your nonprofit additionally lists the town as an additional insured. If those two things, and those are fairly standard, I think, I don't know, you've done work in other communities. other communities.
The town of Barnstable, to my knowledge, does not do that with Cape Cod Rowing. And we've got Cape Cod Rowing and Barnstable both rowing out of Lakewood Pocket. But again, I'd have to look at the verbiage on that and just make sure, because I'm not a legal expert. I'm new to setting this up.
Well, we have to go by our town.
Absolutely.
I think if you, if you can get those two, investigate and see if you can get those two things, I don't think you're going to have any problem here. And to the extent that that doesn't work for some reason, then it may make sense to see if there's a way to make the town a partner in the program, so that our liability insurance would cover us, so that you run it.
With recreation.
Either, you know, either you buy the stuff and then work out an agreement and donate it to the town, run it as a town program, and we find a way to give, you know, extend your free benefit to your subject population through that program. We do it that way, and then, you know, it would be available to anybody else in town who wants to be able to use it.
Not that I...
There's a couple of different ways to do it, so...
Not to, in any ways to compare the worth of either thing. We just finished doing it with Mashpee Dog Park people. They started their charity, their, they got all their paperwork, their fundraiser and whatnot. And when they got far enough along to come to us, we went partnership with them. So, now it's on our town land, we secured a grant along with them, and they are maintaining it now, I guess.
And maintaining it.
And this has all just happened this summer, so...
And we would maintain the grants.
But, yeah, but...
I think, I think preferably, the, the way you came in looking for arrangements to be able to run your program, but just be able to use a little bit of a slice of land, the town is preferable, the way you've proposed it. So, if you can meet that, if you can live with a license agreement, and you can list us as additionally insured, I don't think you have a problem. If those don't work, then I think we can try and figure out something that falls a little bit closer to the dog park model in terms of a joint program, so that our insurance coverage covers.
I really like that latter idea, and it would almost be worth it to just wait and see about pursuing that.
Well, someone's got to come in with us, such as we'll stay with the dog park, with a plan, with a business plan.
Your grantee may not, I mean, it may be a little weird for them, so they, I don't know whether they'd want to see their money in effect, buy equipment that then passes through to the town. But, you know, we could work with you on, on either one of those options.
The idea...
If you would like, once you have the precise numbers and the parameters in which you have to operate with, if you would like to come down, sit down with me, then I can bring something back to the board for their final approval.
I think what you're, you're getting tonight is that I don't think there's anyone in this board that's against it by any means. It's finding the mechanism of putting it together and coming to us, and then we'll be as cooperative as you'd like.
Yeah, everybody wants to try to help you.
And I, I think, I think that this board will find a way for it to work for you, work with you to make it happen.
I appreciate that. I attentively said if we could get approval tonight, we'll be on the water.
Oh, you haven't got a chance of getting approval tonight, I'm sorry, but...
Well, because I, I started this in...
This is municipal government, it doesn't work like that.
Well, we lost the entire summer. We, our rowers here were in May at Community Rowing, joining with the military program up there in anticipation of being on the water themselves, the beginning to middle of June. So, that's, I sent the proposal April 29th, and, you know, it's, it's August 10th. I'm out of time. The, the issue here is that for safety reasons, we have to anticipate that our new rowers are going to fall in the water. Water temperature is critical to ensuring their safety. And of course, everybody has to be tested for swimming ability. If you can swim long you want, if the water's cold, you're looking at hypothermia. So...
Well, you have a sympathetic ear here. When you're ready, we're ready.
Well, all right. So, you're, you're stating that, that, that insurance plan with the town of Mashpee...
No, I'd look into both of it, as Andy said. I'd look into both of it. I think, look into your own insurance first, because that's the way it is.
I think, I think if you get a fair, if you were able to come in with a liability waiver that had the town listed as additional insured, I think you could get a, a very quick approval on a, on a license agreement. If you want to talk and investigate being a municipal nonprofit partnership, frankly, that will take longer, because we got to figure out how to do it. So, you know, if you can, can deal with the insurance thing relatively quickly, I think...
Then she needs her 501(c)(3).
I think you're hearing that we're, we'd be in a position to move as quickly as you could move.
So, you're saying the liability waiver...
She needs a 501(c)(2).
If it's applied for.
If you're talking within two weeks here, this...
No, I'm just saying.
Just timeframe wise.
Yeah, just for the 501(c)(3), just the articles of agreement to register with the Secretary of State, I mean.
It's not going to happen.
It's unfortunate.
It's not going to happen right now. That's going to be a...
One thing I, I would suggest is if, if you have, have you looked at where you would like to put the boat racks, or...
Yes. I've, I've met with Drew out there.
Okay, so, I mean, that, if you came back in and kind of put that together and...
I had a proposal.
Right.
That was in the proposal as well?
Yes.
I think the sole issue is what we've gone over.
Timeframe was.
Make it legal.
Is the legal.
Yeah.
Thank you. I hope you can give me back to us as soon as you want. We'll put you on the schedule right away.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Did a good job, Joan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does, does the board want to consider authorizing me to, if hypothetically, there was a proposal that came back to cover the, the legal end of it?
We don't have a vote tonight.
No.
And I...
No, yes, definitely, like anything else.
Just a consensus for the purposes of, if, if she came back with a document, and if I ran it through Town Council, and he was satisfied, is there anybody here that would have an objection?
Should you allow me use?
Right.
Well, just allowing...
Minus, minus the structure?
Because, do we need a vote?
I would have no problem with that.
Would we even need a board vote?
But I would be no problem.
To, how likely they just...
She's working, she's working with Mary, and Mary, Mary's, that's her baby.
A bunch of people showed up at six o'clock in the morning with boats to go launch them in there. I don't think anybody's going to have a big problem.
That's, that's my point.
Well, and here's the, the thing. I have four recreational doubles up in Hangum that have been ready since May to come down, but they're going to be on a trailer until a boat rack is established. The boat rack is a simple, how do you, just, you place the boats on there. There's no structure to it. It's just putting them on there, so there's not a facility or anything involved in that. And we would just name the oars up against the rack. But I don't even have that yet. What I would have is a, a trailer that has four boats on it, that would have to sit there.
You'd also have to sign a waiver for transporting those boats back and forth.
We need the insurance, we, we've already made it.
It's complicated. Could I bring the trailer down and just bring it on the beach?
It's an insured, it's an insured trailer, correct?
No. Yeah, but we're not going to give permission to give use until we, we get some cover.
No, so she get, so you get all the assurances, right.
US Rowing, I spoke to Tom Darling from US Rowing. He's the head of adaptive and para rowing for US Rowing, and he was willing to be on the phone during this hearing and actually attach to the fact that they will help support setting up this program with the insurance.
We, we have no problem with the program.
So, I mean, I can go to him and tell him what's needed, and I think I will need some clarification on that, because it sounds like it's two documents.
In the meantime, you can work right through the town manager.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
Reviewing approval of October Town Meeting warrant article submitted by the Waterways Commission, July 13th. Do we have any from the Waterways Commission here?
We don't have anyone from the Waterways Commission, but I did meet with Mr. Bates, and he would like the board to review and put this for...
So, what's happening here is that people get on their trailer, and rather than crank it, actually use some muscle, they just floor it, and they push the boat up on the rack, on the trailer, and all that does is blow out all the sediment at the base of the, at the base of the pad, and then the pad falls apart. Or, and/or, when you back up, it creates a precipitous drop-off, trailers get stuck. So, this would...
That's what happened at Great River.
It is, it's also happening in Mashpee Wakeby too. And so, this is an effort to try to make, give us a bylaw that says you can't do that, so the harbor master would be able to enforce it when they see some knucklehead sitting there, you know, trying to run his trailer up instead of getting out and using the crank.
And, and there would be a sign indicating that you can't do it.
So, a lot of our landings currently say, don't power load, you're ruining the ramp.
But we don't have the bylaw.
We don't have a bylaw. So, I would suggest, let's not get hung up on the October, on the, whatever the filing date for, when was it, July 15th?
Yes.
Came in after July 15th, so we need to approve it.
Yeah, I make a motion, well, John left me, but I'll make a motion to approve this after the town.
I second it.
Okay. You're chairing it now, Carol. You're in command.
Yes.
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 That's a good idea.
Mr. Spock here.
Is the board in the affirmative?
Yes.
Yes, I, I read a yes. Go ahead.
Review the, review and execution of order taking a portion of Saddleback Road.
So, this would be the last, this is, is this the last action required by the board on this long, drawn-out conversion?
I hope so.
Okay. I make a motion, we execute the order taking the portion of Saddleback Road.
Second.
I'll favor it.
Yes.
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 And similarly, I'll make a motion, we approve the order of taking for Jonas Drive, Valerie Circle, and Rochelle Court.
Second.
Yes.
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 You want me to take? Ratification of Town Manager Decision to Perform Emergency Repairs on Fox Hill Road Pursuant to Chapter Section 150-5 on General Bylaws and Board of Selectment Policy 011-...
Something.
It's housekeeping. I, I don't know that these came before you in the past, but I just wanted to make it official.
So, what did you do?
Approved the town DPW director's request, and it was not to exceed five hundred dollars?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I'll make a motion, we ratify the town manager's decision.
Second.
Yes.
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 Reviewing this discussion of Town Manager Evaluation Format.
John, you want to?
So, what you have in front of you right now is the three of us met.
Yep.
And kind of went back and forth on what we thought would be a good performance evaluation. So, I don't know if you, or if you had a chance to speak at it.
Yes, I did.
It's...
I think it's good.
Do you have any questions, Anna?
I don't. I thank Selectmen Garland and Selectmen Cotton for their time, and we sat down, hashed this out. I think it's, it's all right on the mark. It's...
I think it's good.
I think you did a great job. Thank you, Andrew and John.
John, you want to make a motion to make that official?
Motion to approve the Town Manager Performance Evaluation.
I'll second that.
As presented.
All those in favor. John?
Yes.
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 Up comes the fun part.
Discussion Board Selectment Goals and Objectives for 2015-16.
All right, I have a suggestion. In, in this discussion process that John and I have with Rodney, you know, the, the broader issue of, you know, having a set of priorities that, much of this evaluation form is predicated on us having, as a group of five, having some fairly clear priorities. So, what I was going to suggest is that you have a copy provided. Last year, we, over a period of a couple of meetings, some offsite, some here, set up a series of 2016, goals for the community and the manager and the leadership team. What we're suggesting tonight is that, at our next meeting, we ask Rodney and Tom to come in and update us on progress on the things that we said we wanted to do last year. Some of these are done and get checked off.
Yes.
Some of them aren't done, some of them are ongoing. Let's get briefed on where we are, what we accomplished in the last year. And then, not the next meeting, but the meeting after, have a discussion at one of these meetings and see if we can come up with an expanded revised version for 2016, which would then be the basis, it would queue back to the, to the amendment process. So, you know, a two, a two-meeting process to get us caught up on where we are and decide on where we want to go. If we need more time at the end of that second meeting, we can do something offsite, we can have a subsequent conversation. But Lisa would give us a process to start where we want to, where we want to end up.
Everyone in agreement with that?
Yes, Ronnie.
Good. Obviously, I'm looking for board input on what is measurable and what is attainable.
That sound okay? Do we just proceed that way?
It makes a lot of sense. Got to know what's done and where we're going to go.
I want to obtain a motion to...
Wait, can we just come back? We skipped over the tax letter.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that was just the correspondent.
Well, do we need to talk about it?
We don't really need to talk about it, but it is obviously going to impact us financially. There is one union right now that still is without a contract. I've interjected that I would like to, in, in those negotiations, which obviously are going to be front and center, and nothing is going to obviously occur without consultation with the board. But I'm just, right now, getting the feet wet, so to speak, and I'm having the preliminary discussions. But I did bring this up, because it is something that I think needs to be negotiated.
Does any of our, this kicks in in 2018.
Yes, but we do have employees.
Do any of our contracts go past 2018?
Well, there's one that's outstanding now, and I believe that the current ones expire June 30th, 2017, I believe.
They go through FY 17.
Okay. So, but we're not, so, so this penalty doesn't kick in before we have a chance to negotiate with every one of our unions where this is an issue?
Right. And if you're wondering why now, it's because I am going to be negotiating with FD. Moreover, I want you to be aware of this well in advance, because this is an important financial issue.
This is a question that came up before, and you might not know the answer, Andy might. Am I of the right assumption that we cannot change anything unless we get all the unions?
Well, it's, it's per collective bargaining unit. Like, if, if one unit negotiated it out in one dent, would we have to impact bargaining with them? Yes.
I think on the health, I'll check into that. I think on the health, it's different. I think it's all or none.
All or none of what?
If we make one thing available to them, to any, it has to be available to all?
I think so, yeah. Check on that, just so you...
I will.
Before you...
But, either, either that were the case, we could stagger it.
Well, the thing is, as of June 2018...
As of such and such a date, we're going to...
Yeah. But I, I just want to make you aware of that, because that's always a hangup. Even in private industry, that becomes a hangup.
We could just, as a matter of negotiation policy, we're not offering this again. If somebody wants to claim that's an unfair labor practice, they can grieve it.
All right, well...
Okay. You got to start somewhere.
You want to, you want to just do it with the unions too?
Hey, I'm firm.
That's it. That's fine.
I'll obtain a motion to adjourn.
I second.
All those in favor. John?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you.
Aye.